Welcome to the regular meeting of the City of Delray Oaks City Council. Today's Tuesday, December 14th, 2021, and it is 6 o'clock on the nose. Karen, could you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Shirley, here.
Councilmember Gagliotti.
Here.
Councilmember Donaldson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lintell.
Here.
Mayor Kerr.
Here. I see Yanelli. Yanelli, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I do believe we have Reverend Shinkake here. There he is. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. And I am honored to be able to lead the invocation for tonight's meeting. December is a time for reflection and a time for celebration. Let us take a moment to reflect on the opportunities that we've been given to live this life. First, we are indebted to the very place where we live. We're given the sun, its light, warmth, and energy, the earth, water, air, that are all necessary for our existence. Secondly, we are indebted to our birth and all the conditions that brought it about. Thirdly, we are indebted to our fellow human beings. Through cooperation of many, peace is possible. Development of culture becomes a reality. Transportation, sanitation, education become possible, allowing us to live in peace. Finally, we are indebted to the teachings from where we learned to live in peace and harmony. If we can come to truly appreciate and realize the infinite amount of our indebtedness, everything will be embraced in the light of gratitude. May the Delray Oaks City Council be blessed with wisdom and compassion and celebrate all of the holidays with kindness and understanding. May you all continue to deliberate for the welfare of all sentient beings. Namu Ami Dabut, namu Ami Dabut, namu Ami Dabut, namu Ami Dabut. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful end of the year, and we look forward to seeing you in 2022.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Bye.
Bye.
That was lovely. Now it's time for public comments. General public comment must deal with matters subject to the jurisdiction of the city and the council that are not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council on matters not appearing on the agenda may do so now. The public may comment on any other matter listed on the agenda at the time the matter is being considered. There will be a time limit of no more than three minutes for each speaker. No action will be taken on matters brought up under this item, and all comments will be referred to staff. So, any public comments on items not on the agenda? Oh. I am not seeing any raised hands. Karen? I don't see Karen either.
Karen said she would be on the phone because she was having computer problems.
Thank you.
I've not seen any other hands, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Randy. So, we're going to move on to our first item, which is a presentation of economic development opportunities and challenges for all city-owned properties. I'll turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So, as those of you who have been here for all of this time will recall, this is something that's been in the works for a number of months here. Fortunately, for such a small town, we have a lot of opportunities ahead of us for things to be looking at in terms of where we want to go in the future and what we want our city to become and how we want to grow going in the future with some of the new opportunities and new land that we have. So, we want to kind of, excuse me, kind of frame that discussion and give everybody context because very few of us, if any of us, are development professionals. And this isn't something that we do in our everyday life. So, we want to start learning the terminology, give you all an understanding of where we fit into the regional market and what makes sense, what doesn't make sense. So that as we're developing that vision for what our town's going to become in the future, we can be realistic so that when we're talking to developers, we can help them work on what's going to work for them while still fitting with our vision for the community. And so with that, we've asked David Zender and Tom Martins from EPS to come and help with that discussion as they are experts in this field. Denise Duffy is also here to provide some perspective from a planning perspective as our planning consultant. If David and Tom need some help with that, so help speak our language for us. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to David, and I'm going to stop talking and let him do all the talking now.
Thank you, John, and good evening, Mayor Kerr, members of the city council. David Zender, Managing Principal with Economic and Planning Systems. I'm here with Tom Martins, Vice President with EPS. And we most definitely need help Denise Duffy, who I consider to be the foremost land use expert on the Monterey Peninsula and the larger region. So, we've got a great team here. This all got started, as John mentioned, a while back. We've been in the process of selecting a developer for some time. This started under the tutelage of Dino Pick when an RFQ was released, and we received responses to that. And where we stand today, we have two viable developers of the four-door parcel waiting in the wings, you know, ready to reengage with the city on the selection process. And as I'm sure many of you recall, we suggested that the city engage in a factual exercise first before we go too far with developer selection and then developer negotiations subsequent to that selection. And as we've discussed with you all a number of times on the four-door property, the leading sort of idea for the reuse of that property is one of residential reuse. The property has been cleaned to residential standards. There's a very specific area that is cleared for development. But as you know, you know, this property is so large that it effectively could double the city population. And so, and that depends on a lot of things, including resources, and not the least of which is water. But the notion of this project really emanated from wanting to sort of sort through community priorities and to make sure that everybody had sort of a factual commonality. As we move into this phase, there will certainly be enhanced demand for other commercial uses as you bring on more housing in the city, if that's what happens. And the location of those uses and the larger sort of land use patterns of the city are important to consider at this really critical nascent stage in the city's final phase of development. So, that's how it all sort of started. And then, from there, it evolved a bit in terms of looking at all of the city's publicly-owned parcels, major parcels, and thinking about those as well. So that we sort of put all of the city's land assets on the table and think about how do they work together, if at all? And can they be, or should they be thought through in a way that would be conducive to ways that the city sees itself developing over time? And so, for example, commercial development, there's been a lot of discussion of a town center in Delray Oaks. Well, where's the right location for that? If the four-door parcel goes forward and there's residential development, where should supporting ancillary retail go, medical services, other things? And then beyond that, the city has a need to generate revenue. And so, all of these sites have the potential to generate revenue for the city's general fund. And so, basically, what we've done is we've canvassed the market. We've looked carefully at the overall attributes of the city-owned properties. And we provided some recommendations, both in terms of what your market support is and then what prospective ideas for the reuse of various parcels are. So, that's effectively what we're doing. And I want to mention that all of this is intended to facilitate outreach at the end of the day. This project is not an outreach project, per se. This project was to basically establish a common factual basis from which an outreach process could go forward. And so, with this information, we believe the city is now in a good position to reach out to the community and begin discussions about the future form and function of the city. So with that, I have, we have a brief PowerPoint presentation. So, I'm going to do a share screen, if I may. Trying to put this in slide mode. Bear with me for a minute. I'm getting a little... So my computer is frozen.
David, do you want Randy to put your PowerPoint up for you?
Yeah, but I can't stop the share, and I don't know how to adjust that. My cursor is not being picked up. There we go. Okay. Okay. Looks like...
Randy, are you there?
Hey, Randy, are you there?
Yeah, I'm speaking to John right now. Sorry.
God bless you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are you still there, David? I'm going for David to rejoin. There he is.
Okay, I'm going to have to ask somebody else to bring up a screen share.
Oh, David, just to let you know, on the screen is the PowerPoint presentation. Randy's been able to put that up. And so, if you wanted to go on your own computer screen...
Randy's got control? Okay.
Yeah, Randy's controlled. He has a PowerPoint up, and we're waiting for you.
Thank you very much. Apologize for the technical glitch here. Not sure why I got kicked out of Zoom. Good to be back with you all. And so, I hope my intro remarks were audible. Okay, great. Okay, next slide, please. Are we able to move to the next slide?
No, not yet, David.
It looks like we're having technical issues with the screen shares.
Randy, do we need to go out and come back?
I don't think that's going to help. It looks like it's a Zoom client issue.
Okay.
So, Randy, do you have control of the screen now?
Yeah, but I'm cycling through the slides, and it's not showing on the share screen.
Got it.
David, are these slides different than the presentation in the agenda packet?
No, they are the same. So if you have that, I can walk through that, and you can follow along.
It's all yours, David.
Okay. All right. Okay, so we'll go with hard copy. If everybody's ready, we'll plow through here. Okay, so thank you very much. So, I'm going to skip the About EPS. I think you know who we are. The key team members I mentioned before, it's myself, Tom Martins, and Denise Duffy. And as you know, we've done a number of EPS projects with Delray Oaks over the years. We've been involved in all facets of the study of the regional economy, and were advisors to the four-door reuse authority when it was still in place. So, to... Bear with me for a moment.
I find it would be helpful if, when you get to the location you'd like to discuss, if you let everyone know the page number of the report. Okay, thank you.
So, I think that there's a little bit of a question here because the, pardon me, Mayor, but the mayor asked David whether or not this is the same as the agenda packet. And the presentation and the PowerPoint is about the agenda packet, but it is not the same documentation.
Thank you for bringing that up.
So I think that would be important to try and pull up the PowerPoint, if at all possible. I'm sorry for my interruption.
Thank you. Thank you, Denise. I had this same question.
If you don't mind, I'm going to try to do a share screen one more time and see if, because it appears everything's working more normally now. So, I'm going to give it one more go.
Please do.
Voila. Oh, it's still not, still can't turn the page. Oh, there we go. Okay, all right, there we go. We are in business. Apologize for all of that. Okay. All right, so scope of work for the parcel analysis. So, overall, we took a look at market opportunities, constraints, and the fundamentals of sort of the local and regional economy in terms of housing, retail, both demand and leakage, and then prospects for other commercial development. Denise worked tirelessly to evaluate the different sites in considerable detail. And in the report, there is a number of tables that very specifically lay out everything that is effectively known about these sites. And we have those in the presentation as well. And then, so we're going to go through those, and then we'll talk about sort of what it all means in terms of our sort of evaluation of opportunities and constraints, and then next steps. So, this provides an overall aerial view. And the point here is that Delray Oaks occupies a really strong regional location. It is set back off the coast. But certainly, the corridor, the 68 corridor, is the, you know, the main sort of route connecting the Salinas Valley to the peninsula. And then, with 218 coming in, intersecting at 68, there's sort of a natural node in the regional transportation network at this site. So, Delray Oaks does have good regional position and also really good access to, you know, the overall four-door amenity package. You know, open space amenities are really important. It's good to see the Fortag Trail sort of capitalizing on that and helping to complete the community over time and integrate it with its neighbors. And then, the, you know, the access to both the airport and the racetrack are both amenities that position the city well for a variety of different things. So, the key sites you can see here. Site one, obviously, the topic of the four-door developer selection process, currently zoned commercial and vacant. The DTSC is cleared, a significant portion of this site for residential development that would require a rezone in order to move that direction. You can see Site 1A is here, and Site 2 over here. Both of these are approximately 18 acres. Both are positioned as significant park/habitat resources for the city. They each may have a small degree of development potential. So, we'll talk about that a bit. Then we have Site 3, public/city parkland. And the, and then Site 4, this small piece in this location here. So, we're going to talk about, this is currently a vehicle storage lot, partially developed. And then Site 3, we all know, adjacent to the Safeway. And so, you can see here are the key sites in terms of how they lay out. I always like to total my numbers. And so, this comes out to be something on the order of 290 acres when you bring them all together. So, the city is in control of a significant amount of publicly-owned land, which is a rarity in this day and age. You can see that for each of these sites, there's a considerable amount of information. And we're not going to necessarily read through this today, but it does appear in the report. But just some key facts under each one. And in fact, Denise, would you like to maybe walk us through these sites?
I'll do a brief walkthrough, David, and be happy to. I think most people are very familiar with the sites. And our task was a summary of the major constraint issues and opportunities on each of the sites. Site 1A, of course, is our former four-door lands. It is partially cleared through former four-door because of the unexpendable ordinance, not all developable. There are some major constraints in terms of oats on the site. There are also other constraints related to HMP, Habitat Management Plan, requirements under FORA for chaparral habitat, installation-wide multi-species habitat plan, elements of that which will obviously be considered any future development. Other considerations relate to water, availability of water. This is through Marine Coast Water District and the former four-door allocation process, which we can talk about later in questions. And HMP also requires borderland management and fee requirements. Development restrictions are related to all of the covenants and restrictions that came about with four-door. Site 1A is the approximately 18-acre site across the street, if you will, also accessed from General Jim Moore and South Boundary Road, levelled flatter, sloping up towards the city. And it also has some development restrictions, less presence of endangered species, but still an issue or related, some coastal level habitat, maritime chaparral habitat. This was the old 31 AC under the four-designations, reserves and restrictions related to management controls, some HMP and borderlands requirements, compliance with the memorandum agreement from the ESA related to the former four-door, still required. Site 2 is what we always called the 17-acre site. It's within the, it's not within the former four-door, so sorry, that's a typo on the area. It's the area that's within, that was considered for an RFP a year or so ago, related to, and it is, it has wetlands on the site. It has access considerations related to, you know, access off of Canyon Delray Boulevard, particularly in relation to Caltrans requirements for anything related to that. It would be, it has been considered by the Recreation Committee, if that's the right term, as well as with the Parks District for potential for consideration for some sales related to that. And there's, we've done particular studies regarding wetlands, species, et cetera. But there is some developable property on that, but then the, that is a small location that I think is, as I think is identified in the report. Site number three is the Garden Center that is also part of the, what was used to be called the Work Memorial Park at Delray Park. And it has Safeway property on one side, actually access from that, and has the Garden Center on the other side, includes the tennis courts. It has wetlands, it has been, it is a part of the Fortag property for trails as is some of the other properties, and that's important to consider. And it also has riparian and flood issues related to that site. And then there's final site 4. It's the old storage or current public work storage yard, used to be the RV parking area. And it has some wells associated with it, a well associated with it. It has potential for water use and availability. It is one of the few sites that's completely, if you will, paved and what would be considered developed in that sense. And it has access off of Canyon Delray also, as does Site 2 and 3.
Yeah, Denise, I think we should point out, since it says 10 acres there for that lot, that that entire lot includes the park and City Hall and the Public Works lot. So, the actual portion of the property that we're talking about is about an acre and a half.
That's correct. We kind of tried to get as big of the area, but the parcel size itself on the acreage is that. And same thing with the 13.5 acres on Site 3. These are acreage sites from the county GIS system. And so, we can be more definitive, as we have been to identify just that area. I think, you know, we talked about the most, 2 acres, in that site.
Perfect. Thank you, Denise.
Thanks for that clarification. Thank you, David.
Okay, so we're going to move beyond that and dive right into the demographic and market analysis now. So, this provides just an overview of the demographic socioeconomic analysis area that we looked at. We looked at both a 2-mile ring and a 3-mile ring in order to sort of evaluate sort of conditions around Delray Oaks. One of the really interesting things, this is not a surprise to anybody, but it is, it's quite striking when you look at the numbers, is the reliance we have on outside commuters to employ, to be our employees in the Monterey Peninsula and coastal area. So, basically, we have pretty much about half or more of our coastal employees are coming in from the outside. And so, this is just really indicative of, you know, something that the peninsula's been wrestling with for a long time in terms of trying to find better balance, trying to reduce, you know, congestion on Highway 68, which is a topic near and dear to Delray Oaks, and really just to try to have a more sustainable sort of future in terms of how we live. And so, you know, the notion of sort of producing housing on the peninsula is one idea for balancing the larger peninsula economy and reducing this dynamic, which would be a benefit to everybody. So, we took a look at age and educational characteristics. And the notion here is that effectively, you can see on the left side, the 2021 age distribution for Delray Oaks, the 2-mile ring and the 3-mile ring. And just sort of boiling it down to the basics, Delray Oaks emerges from... from this socioeconomic demographic analysis as being somewhat older, somewhat wealthier, more educated and less diverse relative to the, the larger areas around it. So now those contrasts are starting to diminish, so that's sort of regression to the mean, if you will. And that's largely, we think, due to turnover and sort of, you know, you have younger households that, that come in as, as homes turn over. You have an aging population, which also places a little bit more stress on the, the commercial real estate in terms of, of medical services and things like that. So that may be sort of one of the outgrowths that we talk about in terms of proximity to Ryan Ranch and some of the types of, of medical services that are provided there. As you look at the household income distribution, Delray Oaks obviously has a very solid income profile. And so your housing prices really relate directly to this, this profile. It's, it's a really kind of solid middle to upper-middle class city. And your housing prices fall in accordingly. When you look at employment by sector, you know, we're really talking about continuation of what we all know. We're highly dependent on tourism. That's starting to diversify a little bit as we think about professional and scientific sectors. And I think many of the efforts to develop our, our research centers, including, you know, the, the educational components at CSUMB and then the continued success of of naval postgraduate school and so forth. So you have a very strong educational sector. It complements the tourism sector and then creates the ability to attract people in, in those highly technical and high-paid sectors based on the area's quality of life. But to do that, you have to build housing. So that's sort of the rub. In terms of the retail gap analysis, this kind of analysis can be used in two different ways. You can look at it as an indicator of what you're falling short on. And basically, those areas would be on the left side, what we call the deficit side. So you certainly don't have your representative share of things like furniture, home furnishings, clothing and accessories, other miscellaneous retail. And you're very well represented, obviously, with grocery store, with the Safeway. And then food services and drinking places, you have a bit of that as well. And I think, you know, it is interesting to look at Stone Creek and, and look at the tenant roster there in terms of, of what's represented. And, you know, there may be, there was definitely success of the kitchen store. There, there could be more support for stores like that coming forward. And in fact, the fact that you have a surplus in terms of grocery and food service, et cetera, is not an indicator of necessarily you have too much. It actually can indicate that you're well positioned for more of it. So I think this is just informational. There, there are probably some areas where you can pick up various types of retail. But certainly, you know, we all know that the direction of retail is online. And so is online just takes a larger and larger share of the consumer dollar. You know, we have to focus our, our bricks and mortar retail on what we call experiential retail. And that means, you know, going, and, and what you remember is not the goods and services that you procured, but the experience that you had while you were there. So it's really about, you know, enjoying yourself and, and it's, it's about quality of life and the way that we like to spend our lives visiting with each other and, and so forth. So I do think that there are in Delray Oaks some niche potentials for experiential retail, gathering places, additional services, small scale. And then potentially some creative ideas as well beyond those. In terms of area home values, you can see here that pretty much everybody in the market area is trending upward, as you would expect. You can see, you know, how strong Pacific Grove and Monterey are at the top of this chart. And then Delray Oaks is the dash line kind of between those two cities and everybody else. So again, as mentioned earlier, Delray Oaks occupies sort of a middle position when it comes to income levels, housing prices and housing values. So on the commercial side, here you can see the situation. It's not, you haven't really added a tremendous amount of commercial development over the years. So we're tracking from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty here, occupied and vacant commercial real estate. What we, what we see when we look at these numbers is effectively, we've got very high degrees of occupancy. But we're not seeing much, much growth in, in lease rates. And so that's a bit of a mystery. It seems to indicate that, that there will be continued need for additional commercial real estate. But it has to be sort of brought on in a slow and deliberate manner. You're going to see, I think, owner-user concepts, similar to what we see with sort of one-off medical offices in Ryan Ranch. More of that is likely, and then other owner-user ideas. And there's been a variety of interesting ideas, you know, even, even relating to the, the racing sector, kind of motorsports. Ryan Ranch has now been the host to at least one major Monterey motorsport operation that is essentially housing, you know, sort of upscale, what we call, well, I don't know what you call them. They're basically, some people call them man caves, but that's not exactly the perfect characterization because they, they accommodate everybody. But basically, you do have a strong sort of motorsport inclination with the proximity to WeatherTech Raceway. Hotels are also a possibility. This obviously relates directly to your visitor accommodations and visitor economy. You can see the effect of the pandemic, the, the massive drop into two twenty twenty. And then the rebound on occupancy, which isn't quite back to where it was yet. What's interesting is on the right-hand side, you can see the average daily rates actually coming back into place fairly powerfully. So there's a nice trend line continuation for those. But with occupancy low, that does place a little bit of pressure. You need, you really need high occupancy and daily rate growth in order to justify new hotel construction. We're not that far off, though. I think we could be within two or three years of seeing viable conditions for additional hotel development. This is a table on land sales. I'm not going to spend too much time on that. Suffice to say that residential land in particular is very, very valuable. And Eclipse is a commercial on a regular basis. So overall, in terms of, you know, some of the, the site recommendations here. So we'll start with site one, the, the four-door piece. So we've, as mentioned, the deepest land residual or highest land value is with residential. Given the topography of this site and the other sort of features in terms of, you know, the need to develop infrastructure and connect it to the rest of the city. There's some fairly significant financial obligations at the front end. And so this is something that really residential stands by far the best chance of, of being capable of overcoming those, those cost requirements at the front end in particular. So obviously, as mentioned at the outset here, the city has issued an RFP. There are two developers that are patiently waiting. And certainly, we've, we've gone away from the earlier sort of rendition of this, this site as being host to a large, you know, sort of, you know, really a major resort. And now it's, it's a much more practical and sort of contained look at residential development. The, the type of residential would need to be closely calibrated to the needs in the region. And I think the needs are diverse. And really, we need to focus on what we call the missing middle. So I think the city would be well advised to pursue sort of medium density to higher density, single-family prototypes. The project would need to be developed in a clustered manner. It can't be a big sprawling project. Needs to be fairly closely contained and concise on the site because of the, the clearance of the contaminants. So given all that, I think that the really interesting thing is, is how do you amenitize that, would you, would you want sort of retail ancillary amenities and so forth up on the site, or would you want to draw those down into the city, onto the other sites? And so that, that would be one of the, I think, really salient questions coming out of this study in terms of, of what would the community like to see? And I think that, that question sort of touches on the notion of where is the town center going to emerge in Delray Oaks and, and how should that happen? And does it implicate any of the city-owned properties? Okay, the next slide pertains to both sites one A and two. We grouped them together. They are, certainly one A is a part of the four-door piece and then two is not. The, I'm sorry, I have that backwards. The, the sites are both really important regional park amenities. I think that is the primary push. And the, the goal of the city thus far has been to realize the, both the the park amenities and the habitat value of these sites. And it's certainly very important to pay attention to both of those. They are also both capable of accommodating some level of commercial space. And so the question would be,
Just getting to the good bit.
Would it be helpful for the city to develop a portion of one or both of these sites to generate revenue, essentially, to help with both general city services, police, fire, et cetera? And/or also provide a funding source for maintaining habitat and parkland. So I think, you know, you have options, you know, the hotel, if it were to be arrayed on one of these or, or located on one of these sites. Even a very small sort of fifty-room limited service hotel could generate something on the order of two hundred thousand dollars a year using sort of normal industry standard occupancy and average daily rate numbers. So you can see that, that there may be options. The city has received proposals in the past for doing more comprehensive development that may or may not be something that the city is interested in. But, but there are, you know, shades of gray here. We can, we, it's possible to develop really smaller elements of these sites as opposed to going too far and, you know, developing the entire thing. So I just think it's, it's something to consider. And it may have, you know, some very positive revenue implications that could help the city. Okay, so moving on to site three, of course, this is the site next to the, the Safeway. Currently, you know, it's a garden center concept in the works. Really interesting site. It does have the potential to accommodate that kind of use. Certainly, our thinking is that this is a, an important site for the city to retain ownership of because it is located in a really strong position. So if you, if, not today, but if you think down the road, maybe a decade or, or, you know, hard to say what the timing would be. But the industry, the real estate industry and the commercial sector is, is is very active right now and, and rethinking and re-envisioning all manner of commercial spaces. And so we're seeing complete redevelopment and replacement of single-use stores, for example, with mixed-use concepts, including improved stores that, that resonate more with today's shopping preferences that are geared more to, for example, grab-and-go type goods and other sort of things that match our, our preferences these days as customers. And, and housing. So there could be a re-envisioned redevelopment concept for the Safeway at some point. I think it would be worth playing out ideas like garden centers and, and so forth, low-intensity, low-impact uses. Generate a little bit of revenue from, from a ground lease in that sort of context. And, and then retain ownership of the site and keep your eye on the market and, and engage, you know, with, with regional interests and, and see if something like that may come forth. And if that seems unlikely, it might be something to reconsider. But if we think there's, there's definitely a long-term upside with that site, just based on a very, very strong regional location. So that is site three. And then finally, site four, the RV storage behind City Hall. And this site is, you know, the one that is fully served right now, it's ready to go. So you could, the city could unload this, this parcel more quickly than pretty much any other. When Dino Pick was city manager, there was consideration of a ground lease to a small-scale cannabis business. And, you know, that, that potential may still be there, although things have quieted down a little bit in the world of cannabis development. So that, I think there may be more competition now and perhaps the conditions are a little bit less acute. But still, that, that type of use remains viable. And the other interesting thing here is just the, the interface along with the prior site three. Obviously, the four-tag trail has to be factored in. And so we need to find a creative way to accommodate, you know, if this goes industrial, to accommodate a combination of industrial and recreational use like that. Make sure that everything is safe and, and laid out in an attractive way and so forth. Good. So in conclusion, the city has a really high-quality group of, of land assets, small, medium and large. And, and you have some options. So certainly, there's, there's great pressure to build housing. The city's, you know, regional housing allocation is, is significant. And there hasn't been really any production of housing of, of note in Delray Oaks over the last decade. And so there's, there's definitely a big opportunity to put a dent in, in that situation. As mentioned, the hotel market is back on track. We think we're probably two or three years out. But you do have a good regional sort of market niche here relative to WeatherTech and then other assets such as Ryan Ranch and the airport. And then finally, looking at opportunities for retail, not, not big opportunities, but I would characterize these as niche opportunities for providing amenities, kind of activating your neighborhoods and, and perhaps contributing to a town center type of amenity sometime in the future. And so that is really the, the conclusion that, at, at this stage, and we're happy to answer questions. Before I do that, I'd invite Tom in just to, Tom, was there anything that I glossed over that you'd want to emphasize?
No, no, I think let's just wait for questions and, and answer the questions, you know.
Denise, anything more from you?
Well, thank you, David. No.
Great.
Okay, and then Mayor, before we jump into questions, there's one component that hasn't really been touched on too much in this presentation, which is water. And water's our issue for everything that we do going forward. Marina Coast Water District has the rights for water. Has the rights for water service to the former Ford Ord, so they're a key player in this. There's been some discussion about. A settlement agreement that had been reached with fora in the past, which had put a housing unit cap on the former Ford Ord properties. Of sixty one, six thousand one hundred and sixty new units. About whether or not that now. Is still in effect underneath with four going away and with Marina Coast Water District. Now taking over the responsibilities for that and and all the other. Jurisdictions taking over portions of the former Ford Ord and how that all works. Toward what we want to do in our various jurisdictions. Then there's also the allocation of the acre feet of water that came from the. Former Ford Ord that we all get to use as we contemplate development as we go forward. So rather than me talking about that. Rem Scherzinger, who's the general manager for Marina Coast Water, was kind enough to join us today. And since he's the expert, I'm gonna turn it over to him. So that he can give us his view of the world from Marina.
Thanks, John. You're doing a great job. Good evening, everyone. For those of you who have who know me, I'm Rem Scherzinger. I'm the general manager of Marina Coast Water District. And John and I talked briefly and he asked me to come and give you kind of a quick synopsis of where we are. With regard to the settlement agreement, but also in a broader context of the allocation, both for. The water, but also the recycled water. So. I think the first thing to kind of get out of the way is is the settlement agreement with Land Watch and KFO and that. That settlement agreement is. Limits the residential units within the Ord area to six thousand one hundred and sixty units. That is or was born out of the dream for us. Projection plan, which comes from the Sierra Club. Settlement with fora. So it goes, it goes a long way back, but. Suffice to say that all those documents acknowledge the fact that. As our understanding of the water situation within Marina Coast, as that matures. That number can be modified and over time, our community has done a fantastic job. Conserving, we've gone from point six one to point three three and now we're at point two eight acre feet per unit. So we're very comfortable where we are in terms of the water supply. The issue is is addressing the sixty one sixty and so. The district is looking at at different components in inside of those agreements to better understand the calculation. That got us to the sixty one sixty so that we can start to have conversations with the LUJs and the other signatories. To those agreements, but suffice to say, at this point, the district has. Infrastructure agreements, essentially hard commitments with three thousand two hundred and forty seven residential units. So there's still a lot of capacity there. And the balance of the water, the balance of the of the remaining. Four thousand and change acre feet that are available to the LUJs. That water is still open to commercial municipal industrial development. So we have. We have water for Delray Oaks pursuant to our. Our agreement, the district will make every effort to make sure that we deliver our two hundred and. Forty two point five acre feet of water and two hundred and eighty acre feet of. Recycled water. So the other piece to this, so that everybody's aware, the sixty one sixty stays in place until an augmented water supply appears. And the district has secured that water supply. So right now, Pure Water Monterey, we have. Phase one commitment of six hundred acre feet, so that water will buttress. The residential waters, we bring additional groundwater slash exported water. Into into action. So. We stand ready to support Delray Oaks in its mission to or as it begins to. Conceptualize its development and I can tell you that my engineering team has. Put their final button on a ninety percent design for the South Boundary Road. For water, recycle water and sewer. So we're ready to interact with with John and his team. To ensure that any development that you choose is properly served. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you, Rem. So with that, Mayor, we'll turn it back over to you for questions.
Great. Well, thank you, guys. That's a lot of information to digest. So let's go ahead and start with Vice Mayor Lynn Tell. Who is muted? I can't see you. There she is.
I have a question regarding water. I'd like to know what uses are possible for. The pure water versus the recycled water.
Well, right now you can use recycled water on anything other than domestic supply. But what we will be working towards is much like. M one water in Peninsula, we will be looking to inject within the Monterey Sub Basin and extract that water for our customers. As as needed.
Okay, but that water, like you say, would not be for domestic uses for drinking, et cetera.
Not until it's pumped back out of the ground, Vice Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Gagliotti.
Yeah, that was interesting to to hear that. So our two hundred and eighty two acre feet of augmented water, we could. We could use. What's that?
I'm sorry, I thought I was muted. Two forty two. That's what I thought I heard, Rem.
No, that's the, that's the, that's the pure. That's potable. And there's two hundred and eighty two of augmented. And and we could take, I mean. Are you suggesting that we could take that? We could give it back to you? You'd pump it back in now and then and then increase our. Our potable to to eighty, well, a maximum of about five hundred acre feet?
Yes. I mean, less any losses and all that stuff.
Right, exactly, exactly. That's very, very interesting. I want to, I want to drill in more into that later, but. But that's, that's the first I've actually heard that that. That opportunity was available to us. So I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. My other question is to David. The, in the report, it was, it was around the static rents for commercial real estate. That analysis was based on. Static occupancy, static occupancy or or basic static supply since the nineties. With very little turnover. If, I mean, if there was a forcing function, if there was, if there was all of a sudden a whole bunch, like a substantive new supply, would that not kind of break the, some of that logjam? Or potentially break that logjam in in rent potentials or at least in in demand rent because. Now we've got a market. I mean, basically, the market can only ask what the market will bear. And if people are basically renting and they've been in there and ninety percent. Hasn't hasn't turned in years. There's not much more that landlords can ask from, but if all of a sudden there's a lot more, a lot more. Supply available, does that change? Does that potentially change that kind of that rent dynamic?
For a commercial space.
Yeah, commercial space.
The, yeah, I think, you know, it's it's really interesting. I think that the the fact that there hasn't been. A lot of population growth is probably the main factor that sort of kept. Speculative, you know, office and other commercial development in check. And I think that, you know, if if people do respond to, you know, the state's push to do more. And to, you know, locate housing by right, for example, in certain situations and it moves the needle. On the population front. Then I think you will see more of the. Commercial development community taking chances on the market. And putting some product on the ground. Right now, it's it's sort of like, you know, you need. You need bread on the shelves, right, to to sort of. Get things moving and no one's really willing to take that investment risk. You know, in lieu of of seeing some fundamentals in the way of of kind of expected population metrics. So I think if you were, if you were to sort of show indicators of going in the right direction. With some breakthroughs on the waterfront. And then on, not the waterfront, but on the water front. And then also sort of, you know, you're seeing basically, you know, I think a general sort of. Aging of like many places around the US, you're seeing the population get older. Well, that that's usually a pretty wealthy population. And it also is related to health services and wellness and, you know, all that's a huge. Sort of burgeoning niche and Monterey is really well positioned in in that regard. So I do think there are a number of of commercial sectors where you could see some spec development. But you're gonna have to see, you know, some other indicators of being a a welcoming investment locale.
I mean, just drafting on what's going on at Ryan Ranch. I mean, Montai's put. Hundreds of millions of dollars in the ground out there, you know, and and I mean, it bodes exactly with what you're saying is that for the right product. You, we could, we could demand what we wanted, you know, we could get those premiums and and Ryan Ranch is already getting those premiums. So where our place is is perfectly positioned for that particular product. So but that didn't, it didn't show up so much in the report. What I saw, what I read in the report was. Rents are static. They've been this way since the nineties. There hasn't been a whole bunch of new supply. So, you know, that's, that's kind of what you get. And I, and I do think that that's, that's a nuance that I would actually like to see a little teased out and and kind of a light shine. On our report. I mean, this is specific for Delray Oaks and I think that that is a Delray Oak specific opportunity. So I'd like to see that. The other thing too is, I mean, we're just, you know, we're hearing from our tenants that they need like the 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 hospital. Greg Marsalis is moving effectively because he can't, he can't find the space that he needs. Our cannabis, you know, when cannabis was raging, we were hearing that from cannabis. Look, if you, we love to work in Delray Oaks. You guys are business friendly. You know, you're, you're a great place to work. You just don't have the the square footage that we need, so we gotta go elsewhere. That's another thing that that's not, doesn't really show up as, I would say, a Delray Oak specific opportunity. Is that we are a great place to do business. If we had the square footage, people would would, they would grow and expand.
Yeah, it's a great thought. And it is somewhat unusual. I don't recall the last time I saw a combination like this. Of a tight market, but flat rents.
Right.
So it's, it's really. Somebody to take action. To take a chance.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the thing is that the landlords, there's, there's no. There's no incentive for the landlords to really jack the rent because they've got, they've got long term tenants that are sitting in there. So. You know, but but I know people want to buy, I mean, like the airport, whenever the airport, that's all that commercial that, I mean, it's junk. But that stuff is is eighty, ninety percent occupied out there, you know, and as soon as somebody moves out, somebody is right there to take it. So.
Yeah, yeah. So it's all about, it's all about having the confidence to to be the person who takes that investment risk. Yeah, so you can, if you can kind of put that sort of business friendly sort of, you know, profile out there. It could, it could work.
I I would like, I'd like a report to to show what I would say is Delray Oaks opportunities, you know, I mean, we're a great place to work. We're, you know, we're perfectly situated. The product that we could avail, that that we could make available. Is adjacent to premium product that's going in in Ryan Ranch. I mean, those are things that I think that that are, real estate's location, 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 and we've got it in space.
Yeah, yeah. And Ryan Ranch has been going for a long time, as you know, and it's been through trials and tribulations and. You know, I'm not sure Speaker Partners would do it again, given everything that they went through. But, you know, where it sits today, it's it's sort of, you know. It's, 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 it's sort of that it's limits. Most of the good parcels have been developed. There's still some stuff there that's really tough to to get to. So again, if you can offer something up, it's.
Right, exactly.
Geography, a little easier, a little more convenient, a little closer. And then you've got a chance to really leverage the the hospital for sure.
That's right.
We mentioned, you know, sort of the the weather tech and the motorsport angle.
Right, right.
Interesting things going on there. Cannabis is another. So there, there are possibilities. They're they're niche, but they're out there. So we'll add a little bit, you know, in that regard.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
And I invite Tom to jump in with any of these responses as well, Tom, if there's anything you want to add.
No, no, other than just, you know, really what's. The the fact that everybody's sort of locked in place on the on the office side. So there's not a lot of movement. So that your point is well taken and and we'll. We'll all look at that a little bit more.
John, was that it?
That was, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Donaldson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. A big thank you to David, Denise and Rem. A lot of just great information. And I also think this was a really good presentation for our public and. It's unfortunate that we don't have more residents here to listen to this because there is a lot of really good information. In there and not necessarily so so much for the council because we've been immersed in it, but. There are a lot of residents, a lot of folks out there that don't know the details that were just covered. So thank you very much. There is tremendous potential for us and our city and Councilmember Gagliotti touched on. The questions and the points that I wanted to make. And within the presentation, the recommendations make sense. And really, it's incumbent upon the council. Along with a lot of public input to strike that balance between. Our housing requirements, our commercial needs and our open space desires. And when I looked at the recommendation for housing out at Ford Ord, makes sense. It's consistent with our housing element. That supports that, along with a combination of commercial businesses out there. And I also think it's very important, and David touched on this, is our ability to capitalize on the. Capitalize on the tourism industry. Because in Delray Oaks, we get all the negative effects and the impacts from tourism. Whether that's the the noise, the the crowding, the the pollution. But we don't reap any benefit from it. So really, the idea of a hotel along the lines of that mid range. Size that that David mentioned out at the, out at the former Ford Ord or food and drink services. That capitalize on that, I think that's very important. So those are my points. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Shirley.
Yes, thank you. Again, thank you, David and Denise for this presentation. One question I had is in the previous scope of work, again, we talked about community outreach. What do you visualize? You know, what do you, what's your vision for that that portion of this project?
Sure, yeah, really important. The intent of this effort was really to lay down a factual basis. That would allow you to have productive conversations with your community. And so I think now that we've sort of. Made this hurdle, I think we we're now in good position. To pivot to some type of community outreach. It could be, we we talked early on about. Potentially a survey that the city could administer. But you may have other ideas that may be more personal, maybe it's focus groups or, you know, sort of other. Community outreach, charrettes or or so forth. And so we are. You know, sort of committed to working with the city to help generate questions and. Examples of things that may work or may not work. To to basically be a resource as the community goes through its machinations on this and. Debates kind of what it wants for its future. And so we're all about just being supportive and, you know, making sure that people. Are getting answers to their questions. And and really just trying to be as clear and helpful as possible. So I think the stage is set. To move forward with something of that nature. We haven't talked about that in a while, so it'd be good to have, you know, more conversations as a next step. About sort of what might be a logical approach toward drawing the community in. So, but I think it's really important to do.
If I can add to that, David. When the original scope of work was developed and went through the city council a number of times. At that time, we were hopeful to assist the city with development of a community survey, as David mentioned. So we've done some work, researching, survey work and development of of questions, things like that. The council at one time wanted to make sure they looked at those questions. I think there was one. The council at one time wanted to make sure they looked at those questions. I think there was one comment at a certain point. So we want to run that by city manager and see what we've developed thus far. Just in reference to the specifically on the scope of work, because Councilmember Shirley asked about that. They had a limited role in it, and it was going to be taken over by the city, but I think both David and I and Tom. We all want to be able to assist in whatever capacity we can.
Great. Actually, Denise, I have a question for you that just came up. Um, how do you see us moving forward with this in parallel with our housing element? Because obviously, we need to make some big decisions about where we're going to put housing. And and it seems like we need to have that. That idea complete before we we understand what we're going to be doing with further development.
Well, it's actually completely integrated at this point now. We've been waiting for this opportunity for communication with the council. And for this report to come out from EPS relates in relation to opportunity sites. As you know, land suitability analysis and land inventory as part of this requirement of the housing element. And we are both going to be doing that in our update to the fifth cycle, as well as requirement for the future sixth cycle. So these are, oh, you know, lands owned by the city. And so it's very important to understand what the city's wants and needs are and what the market can entail for these properties. As well as being able to. Identify available sites and inventory for where housing and affordable housing can be accomplished. Both in the two thousand and six housing element and which was never, which was adopted, but never. Finished at the HCD and the twenty nineteen and everything before. We always talked about former Ford orders of potential for opportunity site for housing and affordable housing. It hinges upon, can we afford, how do you get the numbers that are needed for sixth cycle? We're still a fifth cycle, thankfully, for each of these sites. So I'm really interested to hear what the council has to say in terms of each of these sites. In terms of potential for what market, what you feel about Davidson Tom's analysis of the market. And where you see opportunity sites are for housing as part of this conversation or future ones. And our housing element is coming before you in March of this year, so good timing. Thank you for that question.
Yeah, I know, I I I think we definitely, you know, and I want, we, we're going to be doing outreach, I'm sure, for the housing element in terms of talking to residents. And so I think having these conversations, you know, collectively, I think is going to be really important as as we move forward. So, yeah, so I I found the presentation, you know, really interesting. I I'm certainly interested in sort of having the regional park with some commercial. I think we want to really create something that is, that draws our residents into Ford Orde. That it makes, you know, we want to provide reasons for them to visit. And to to really be, make that an inclusive portion of our of our city. So I'm happy, you know, I was happy to hear more about water. So thank you, Rem, for being here to to alleviate some of those concerns. So so it is exciting and and I am, I'm looking forward to talking more about it as we as we go. Thanks.
Okay, I have quite a few questions. How does the Surplus Land Act affect these parcels?
Alex, do you want to jump in on this one? Because my understanding is that when Dino was here, he started the process for some of the properties. But I'm not exactly sure where we are on all of these properties.
Yeah, through the mayor, the Surplus Lands Act is a recently amended act. It's been further expanded and clarified. And what it boils boils down to is a right of first refusal for certain organizations. When the city seeks to alienate, whether that be a sale or as HCD is now indicated, a long term lease. There's a duty to offer, was essentially a right of first refusal to certain housing organizations. The good news is, as I mentioned, the legislator has provided more details as far as that process is concerned. It's a procedural requirement. There's no duty to to sell to one of these organizations. I think, you know, there's the good faith effort to come to terms is required, but ultimately that that's not a requirement. So it is in large part a procedural statute.
Okay, thank you. So we don't have to go out to education and park districts and things like that? Or simply just low income housing entities?
Housing in general, I would have to go back and refresh with respect to others. But but the big drive is is housing at the state level, so for sure, it it covers that.
Okay, thanks. And could someone make sure that the council all knows where our adopted redevelopment plan is? There was a reference to it in the report, and I don't think I've ever seen that. So, John, is that something or or?
It's a, I think it's part of the public records of the, when we did the housing element, there's an adopted redevelopment plan. That has been, over the course of time, that was done. I'm sorry, John, but before your time.
Everything was before my time.
But I'd be happy to assist or provide those, that background document. There was a slew of background documents associated with that.
Yeah, I'm sure. That was just one I hadn't heard of, so. And for David, could you give us a definition of what estate or executive housing is in your world?
Yeah, I guess I would start by saying that's sort of the last thing that I would recommend for the Ford Orde parcel. So I think, you know, certainly there's a good representation of estate. Slash executive housing throughout the Monterey region. You have, you know, in your vicinity, on the highway sixty eight corridor. Pascadero, I think, is is one. And and actually, it's interesting when you talk to people who were, you know, involved in the development of that that housing. Wasn't an easy go, from what I understand. I think the the action, so those are, those are, tend to be large lot, more sprawling. You know, geared toward the, you know, the top two or three percent. So that's, that's not really where the need is, where the, you know, we really need housing in the middle. Sort of, you know, we've all heard about the missing middle. And so I think that's going to be a really important element of the developer selection process. Is to find a development partner that gets it. That understands, you know, that that this housing needs to be addressing sort of unmet needs in the Monterey Peninsula. And as such, you know, and I mentioned during the presentation. You know, I don't see this as a sprawling kind of product. I think it's going to be really important to have good urban design, you know, clustered housing. You could even see one of our developer applicants has a number of of really innovative. Sort of, you know, town home products that could actually fit very well. These these can be done, you know, very, very nicely. And and mixed with with more maybe typical single family residential, but not large. I I wouldn't think we're talking about, you know, expansive, large lots. We're really, I think we need to be smart about getting the most out of this land.
Well, and I also think that geographical separation is very real in our city. And one of the things for me is to have a similar look and feel out there. It's already going to be the fourth quadrant of our city, just because of how we're laid out. But to have it be as familiar as possible would be something to get us, you know. To have it be as inclusive and part of our our larger community would be important. So thank you for that, because I thought, I thought I read somewhere that you were suggesting. Estate housing and and that made me a little nervous, but thank you for the clarity. Another definition I would love to hear from you is a destination retail or, yeah, retailer. It, can you give me an example of one that we may know?
Well, maybe the most notorious might be a Bass Pro, and I certainly would not recommend a Bass Pro. You have, you know, so you have these these big monolithic, you know, retailers that I guess you could call destination retail. The. You also have, you know, in 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 places like Monterey, you on, you know, on on your coast. You know, you have, you know, smaller scale, more granular retail that serves collectively as destination retail. So destination retail is simply put, something people are willing to visit to make a destination from. The outside and to travel into your region and stay and spend their money and so forth. And as such, destination retail has created what we call an export industry for the entire Monterey region. The the thing about Delray Oaks is you have to be very selective about the type of retail that you accommodate. And so I think in this case, we're talking about, you know, fairly granular, you know, niche sort of retail. We're not, we're not talking about large floor plate type concepts. We're talking about things that are, that can be located, you know, as as an amenity to a walkable community. For example, a fifth, that the, all the rage right now with consumers is the fifteen minute walkable community.
Yes.
And that's, you know, quality of life. We're all tired of driving everywhere. In Monterey, driving is like kiss half your day goodbye. So, you know, the more you can stay out of the car and and have a higher quality of life and have a healthy and, you know, a healthy lifestyle. Four tag trail plays right into that concept. So you guys are, I think, very well positioned to be. Very scrutinizing sort of possible location for certain types of small scale retail. I I think it's a, you know, it's it's really important not to go too far or or try to do too much.
I I agree. I would love it to be, a- actually, the entire city to be a fifteen minute city. And I think it's it's actually doable. And I also agree with a a niche. You know, selection of businesses, you know, we're not, we're not a big box kind of location. And so what does fit well for us? And, you know, a hotel that could be an Esselin or a. And a Silmar that actually takes advantage of the natural landscape in which it would be. Located makes the most sense to me. The, I I just had a couple of little specifics about the details. So like, the site number one, the Ford Orde. Is it possible to literally state in there that only a hundred acres is available for housing?
Absolutely, if that's the case. Denise, help me out here. Do you know if that is the case?
Well, I mean, honestly, what we'd have to do is do a more defined study than our small component of this to the property. And we, you know, there's only a portion of the site is available for housing. We could do a broader overview of, of, you know, each of the constraints associated with it that was a little bit beyond our scope. And it's really be happy to pull a little bit more together on that. I don't want to give a specific number to it, because then you're you're really defining yourself. But, you know, you're on the right track. It's, there's a certain component of the the areas that I said during the presentation. You've got the area that is very intense. You know, oak woodland that we would suggest stay away from. There's a quarry on the site that is. Not, was not going to be available without a lot of grading. You know, the previous developer, when they came in, they had a mass grading program that wasn't. And well received as, you know, for good reason. And but we'd really have to do a little more refined study on a GIS analysis basis to get a little bit more. We can go back and look and see what was done before to give a specific number like a hundred acres.
Yeah, yeah. Too far off.
Can I actually, David, do you mind if I call on John Gagliotti? Because he may know that number. John?
No, actually, what I was going to say was in, and both David and and Denise, I think, answered it better, is that there isn't actually a number. And and that was one of the things that we talked about a lot in the admin committee in fora was that. I mean, it's really, it's it's up to the wishes of the council to kind of define what we did. There's, there's low hanging fruit, and then there's just stuff that you could beat yourself up and still try to make it into residential. And and I think that Denise's approach is probably the best, is is like, grade that for us, but there isn't a number. And and to say that, I I I wanted to caution us to saying, picking a number out of the air and saying, that's what, that's that's our number. And Denise, Denise said that, so it's a long answer to just agreeing with Denise.
All right. And there was also a reference on one A, the eighteen and a half acres. Is there something that indicates that there's ten acre feet identified just for that location?
We have discussed this before, and this is a really great question. There was an assignment of ten acre feet, as I remember. From when former city manager Dina Pick was doing the. I think it was the E N A, David, that there's a certain amount of property that's left. That after the Crayjacks developed or or have control over the certain two other portions non city owned of the former Ford Orde. And then the assignment was ten acre feet for site one A and the remainder for site one. And that's where that ten acre feet came from. David, can you correct me if I'm wrong? And this, I would definitely need to come back and confirm that, Mayor, with you.
That sounds right to me. We should confirm.
So so it sounds like Dino assigned it for the RFQ. Because I know that there was a an idea to put all of the affordable housing out there. And that ten acre feet would make sense to me.
Right, and I'm not sure there's a, when you, that's a really good point to call it an assignment. I don't think it's an allocation specific to that property, so it isn't. You know, let it, let us get back to confirm that. Thank you for that question.
So similar to the hundred acres, right? If it's just an arbitrary, you know, number, let's, let's make sure we take that out. Okay, and then site two, there was just a a typo. Under the development restrictions, you added the Ford Orde statement. And it it seems like it shouldn't be in there. Am I correct in that? Yeah.
In the presentation, I think I mentioned that, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I heard him say that, but I just wanted to make sure you knew that on the document. And didn't we take the seventeen acres out of the housing element? Out of consideration?
I think the discussion has been presented at the city council. About site suitability analysis and what sites you'd like to see. It was discussed at the approval of the ninth, the twenty nineteen. But it hasn't been eliminated out of the twenty twenty one fifth cycle update from the twenty nineteen housing element. But. In our draft housing element that you haven't seen yet, which is a preview draft. We do not have that site for housing due to the environmental constraints. To put a significant number of homes there, so we didn't consider it a suitable site.
Okay.
I don't know if it was an action taken or it was actually the discussion. From, we've had a couple of meetings already for this update, and that's how we have been using it thus far as it's out.
Thank you for that, because I remember something, and I just want to make sure all the documents match, and I know you know. But I just want to make sure that that we're all clear. Site number three, is it possible to label that Work Memorial Park rather than the area behind Safeway? That would, that would be, it it, you know. And there was, there's no, we've been talking about this for years. But the deed restrictions, it seems like at some point, we all need to really have a conversation. And understand what that means. It seems like at some point we all need to really have a conversation and um, understand what that means. Um, for that as well as the RV, the former RV park. Um, because I understand that that is also part of the same piece of property the works uh, donated to us. So that would be great to understand a little more. And John, maybe that's, that's something that comes back to the council at some point.
Yeah, I think like water, uh, like water, uh, the deed restriction is kind of more in Alex's realm and the legal interpretation of what that means and what we can play around with. So we didn't want to constrain this discussion with those.
No, no worries. It's like as we have these big conversations, you know, lots of things come in and out of my head.
Yeah.
Um, and then, and then I want to make sure I understand, David, your analysis. So for the, the former RV storage park, uh, uh, location four. Um, did I read it correctly that based on comparable land sales? We could estimate selling this for between three and four hundred and fifty thousand? Because it's an acre and a half and you.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we, we went through pretty comprehensive land sale comparables analysis. Um, as you can imagine, um, land sales are, are diverse. I mean, you'll, you'll find fair amount of, of variety in those results. And so I would um, certainly recommend uh, additional sort of evaluation. I think that's a good starting point. Gives you a sense of the order of magnitude. But I wouldn't necessarily go to market necessarily. Just with that, I think you maybe want to talk to um, some additional folks in the brokerage industry. Um, do a little bit more, but, but certainly it, it could have some significant value.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then the last thing is more kind of a comment. Um, you know, it was interesting to see the, the numbers. I mean, we all know that our community is um, has a lot of, of um, wiser people. And um, but I have to tell you, I was at the Santa's workshop and it was really encouraging to see how many young families came, um, and lots of babies. And um, and I would love to be able to focus on building a city that caters to young families and children. And um, you know, and as our older population um, uh, moves on, uh, you know, I really hope that the rest of our community can stay uh, more on the affordable end of the peninsula. Um, to be able to attract not only the young families, but also um, you know, folks that uh, can work hopefully at our new industries. So um, on that, let's go out to the public. Um, I'd like, you know, please raise your hand, Mr. Ragsdale Cronin.
My mute button. Hey, how you doing? So I got three quick questions. Is there a map that shows the parcel number one, the large four door parcel? What areas the DTSC is cleared for housing irregardless of whether it's appropriate to build houses due to the topography and such have you? Um, and then the areas that are not available for housing, are they available for anything? Or do these have to be locked down and people kept out of? So because of a hazardous waste or hazardous material or munitions standpoint? That's number one. Uh, number two, would a housing strict, straight up housing development focused on the, the missing middle actually be able to be funded by this or would produce enough funding coming to the city so that the city could pay for the services needed? Public works, police, fire. I know that can be a very difficult um, balance to find. Um, and third, I guess maybe just an observation, wouldn't a mixed use pedestrian bicycle friendly mixed retail um, housing such basically a foot uh, an area that you, a destination certainly, um, that would have some kind of a transit hub with it? Um, be more uh, I don't want to say lucrative, but from a revenue generation standpoint for the city to support it. I, I don't want to see the city build a bunch of houses and then find out we're, we're going broke. Similar to the analysis that was done for Monterey Downs where it was a net deficit to the city. Um, I don't want to see anything even close to that. So I'm kind of looking more at a mixed use pedestrian bicycle friendly, you know, park, park area slash housing slash light retail. Your niche markets you were talking about. Um, that's kind of my observation. So I don't know if there's a map out there that would show that, but that would be an interesting to look at. And uh, I think that'll do it for now. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Um, Mr. Clark.
Mute. There we go. Am I good? Hey, I haven't done this on my phone before. Well, thank you. And for uh, those that came and made the presentation, thank you very much. So number one, uh, this was great. I'm glad we're making progress and we're glad we're looking at our need to develop because we've got a unique opportunity. So number one is yes, we need to develop and we need to do it now. While the opportunity is at its best. And speaking of outreach, as it was brought up, may I suggest that since we had this presentation lined up to come in here tonight, that those on the council that have a constituency they like to keep informed. This would have been something that could have been, uh, that could have been used to strongly encourage them to attend. Um, instead of getting them all riled up and involved at the end stages like we've seen happen over the last couple of years. So for a few things. Uh, number two, or I guess number three, surveys. I, I get it, but I would like to suggest that maybe um, if we're going to go that route and we want to get people involved, maybe we ought to suggest to them that they get educated first about what it is they're taking the survey about. So they're not wasting our time and their energy and all this emotional stuff that seems to come up. Might I suggest that Randy might cut that, I don't know what it was, thirty minute presentation out and put that on the website? And then before anybody can take that survey, it's a requirement for them to actually sit down and watch and educate themselves on how all the pieces come together and how they all fit. I think we get a lot better sense and a lot better data set based on the facts and actually knowing things and understanding things and researching things rather than just based on feelings. Number three, four, number four. See, number one, we are in a unique physical location. And number five, let's take care of business first. Let's get our finances in order first. Then we have money to do good things with. If we, it just goes the same way if you're at home. If you don't take care of yourself and keep yourself healthy, you can't keep care of those in your family that need your help. And lastly, if I can get it in here, we're, are an older generation. Let's give the active fifty-five pluses a condo or someplace to go to, to so they can turn over their homes to the younger folks. I know if this started twenty years ago, when this first got presented, I would have jumped right into one of those. Thank you very much for putting this all together, everybody.
Thanks, Jim. I can't, I can't turn your, or uh, there you go. Um, any other public comments?
I'm not seeing any mayor.
I'm not either. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna bring it back to the council. Um, any last minute uh, comments? There's no action on this this evening. Um, this has been a fantastic presentation. So uh, Vice Mayor Lindell, any, any last words?
I, uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I feel all the presentations were outstanding and um, very very helpful to me. And I do appreciate your, all taking your time to be here. Thank you, Lynn.
Okay, Mr. Gagliotti. Okay, uh, Mr. Donaldson. Ms. Shirley.
Thanks. Um, yeah, thanks again for being here. Will you do some edits to this and then bring it back? Is, is that where we're kind of, I, I guess I just want to hear next steps?
So, yeah, so like Dave, David mentioned in his presentation, this is kind of setting the table for where we go next and helping to frame our discussions. So we'll be coming back early uh, next year to talk about uh, where we go from here. And this will help, help us with that conversation.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So I just want to echo everybody's thanks for the work. I know that this um, has taken a little longer than we originally thought. But um, David, Denise, um, uh, Mr. Martins and Rem, thank you for coming and sharing your uh, your work and your expertise with us this evening. Happy holidays and it sounds like we'll be talking uh, early in the next year.
Thank you so much. Happy holidays.
You too.
Thank you, everybody.
Take care.
Bye.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone on the council like to poll any item? Seeing none, um, anyone in the public want to uh, poll any item on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will come back to the council and entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Karen, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Aye.
Councilmember Donaldson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lindell?
Aye.
Mayor Kerr?
Aye. So the consent agenda passes unanimously. Uh, no old business this evening, but new business. We ha- consider applications to fill one vacancy on the planning commission. Um, is, uh, are both applicants here? I saw Louise.
Oh, Louise, yeah.
Is Mr. DiMaggio here? Okay.
I don't, I don't see him on the list.
Okay. Um, so Louise, we're gonna start with you. Are you? Would you, is there anything you would like to say before we ask some questions?
Uh, yeah, you know, I uh, was on the planning commission seven, six, seven years ago and um, I enjoyed it. I spent two years on the city council, which most of the time I enjoyed. Um, I do have to say I was, uh, I think the timing is fortuitous that, that uh, uh, I got very familiar uh, reading through the uh, report and then the presentation this evening.
Hello?
I look forward to um, the city uh, has a, has a great future and, and I really want to be a part of it. And, and there's a lot of things that, that that's important that, that can be done for the benefit of all. And uh, I hope to continue to serve the city in that way.
Great. Um, so let's go to the, the council. Ms. Lindell, any questions of, uh, Ms. Getzel?
No, I don't have any questions of her. I, I do want to say that she did an outstanding job both on the planning commission and on the uh, city council. Um, and is currently doing, I'm on the, the representative on the mosquito uh, and so um, I highly recommend Louise. Uh, I think, like I say, she's done an outstanding job and she's certainly a a firm supporter of the future of Delray Oaks and wants to participate in it.
Randy, could you please um, mute Aaron R's iPhone? Just so they can have a conversation. There we go. Thank you.
Mayor, if I might, I, I think that might be Mr. DiMaggio trying to get in.
Oh! Sorry, Aaron, Aaron R.
Hel- hello?
Hello?
Oh, hi. Am I on?
Are you Mr. DiMaggio?
Yes, I am.
Okay, well, so I'm glad, I'm glad to know you're here, but we're in the middle of having a conversation with Louise first. It's fine.
I'm so sorry. I wasn't sure if I, how to get on. That's our, sorry about that.
So now we know you're here and we're gonna finish some questions with Louise and then we'll get to you. So I'm glad you're here.
Got it. Sorry about that.
No worries. Um, let's go to Mr. Gagliotti. We're talking to Louise.
Yeah, I have no questions for Louise and I, I, uh, and I have no question in my mind. She will be a fabulous uh, uh, planning commissioner. Um, she's got the experience. She was a fabulous planning commissioner prior. And she's, was a, a, a great person to work with when we were both on planning commission. And uh, and so I will be definitely supporting her.
Okay, Mr. Donaldson.
No, I have no questions, Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Shirley.
Yeah, thank you, Louise, for applying. Um, I see the planning commission as playing a very large role as we move forward. And so I wanted you to just, if you could expand on that and think about, you know, I'm thinking about Rena, the housing element. I'm thinking general plan. I'm thinking four door development. Can you just, you know, expand a little bit on what your thoughts on the planning commission and its role as we move forward?
Um, you know, I, having, when I was on the city council, um, I was uh, in your position as the Ambag representative. So I am familiar with, with the Rena numbers and, and the importance of those. Um, and I, I uh, had a lot of other experiences with uh, both on the planning commission and on the city council as far as the housing element. That was one of the last things that we worked on before I left the uh, city council. And, you know, it, it's a, but it's, you know, the planning commission is there for the most part, um, the important part, I think, is to gather all the information and provide recommendations to the city council as far as the future of the city. And help the city council, uh, give them the options and, and identify the, the positives and negatives and the neutrals uh, of all the options.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, I just have one. Um, uh, can you share with us your thoughts about residential and or commercial development of the seventeen acres?
Um, I would have to recuse myself because I live too close to it.
That's clever. All right.
Well, you know, it's not, not that I necessarily.
Good. I'm glad to know you understand uh, the F P P C rules. Um, well, let's move on to, uh, may I call you Sal?
Yes.
Okay, so Sal, welcome. Thank you for um, applying. And we'll just go through the same thing with a couple of questions of you.
Okay.
Uh, would you like to say something before we start?
Oh, no, I just want to let everybody know, you know, I, I've uh, lived in Derry Oaks pretty much all my life. And uh, I'd been in construction most of my adult life. So I'm, I'm familiar with uh, building and, and uh, development. And uh, I just want to be uh, uh, open minded on our city. And uh, I know I'm new at all this. I've always been on the other side of the planning department. So I uh, I just saw the application in there and I just felt I wanted to uh, get back to my city with uh, the, what I've done all my life.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's start with Vice Mayor Lindell.
Yes, uh, I noticed that you have, uh, in your references, you don't have any Delray Oaks residents in a
Oh, no, I've done a couple of house, I've done uh, I did Rick uh, Greer, uh, Greer's house on diploma. I did Adam Serrano's house on diploma. Uh, I'm doing a bathroom at, at, right now on uh, Via Verdi. So, you know, I've done work here. Plus I've done a lot of work on my home.
Yeah, I realize you've done work here, but I, I just wondered why you didn't use any of those folks as references.
Oh, well, I didn't know how many to put down. I did put the historical society and civic road because I took first place on a house that I did over there. So, and I, you know, um, you know, this is all new to me. I've been self-employed since nineteen eighty-four, so I really haven't filled out that many application uh, in a while.
Have you ever applied for a planning commission prior to this?
No, this is the first time I've ever even attempted something like this.
Okay, and thank you very much.
All right, uh, Mr. Gagliotti?
No, I'm, uh, no questions. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Okay, Mr. Donaldson?
No, I have no questions. Thanks.
Ms. Shirley?
Um, Sal, I have the same question that I asked, um, Louise. What, how do you see the role of the planning commission moving forward? Um, especially as we talk about, uh, our future development?
Uh, you know what? I, I, I like the idea of growth, but I like the idea of doing it right, keeping the, uh, citizens in the loop and, uh, just making sure it's done right.
Good. All right.
I'm very open-minded.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Sal, um, in your opinion, what are the most important issues facing the city?
Well, there's a lot of them, but, uh, it's an old city. You have a lot of old houses here. The streets are old. Uh, but, I mean, I, that, that's a conversation that takes a lot of people to, uh, come up with a good idea about. And, uh, to add to that, you know, the houses there are really old, so what you see on paper is easier than what you do, you know, uh, when you're on the project, you know what I'm saying?
I have one of those houses, yes.
Yeah, me, we all do. Uh, one thing I, I do know that, uh, you know, like, I just went through a, a final inspection in Civic Road. And the planning department, before they finalize a job, they come out and go over the plan and make sure that, uh, the homeowner, you know, did exactly what they told us they were going to do. And, uh, I haven't, I, I, I haven't experienced that in Derry Oaks, so I think that's important.
All right, um, so you do do business within the city?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, I'm, 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 I have a few projects going as we speak.
Okay, so are you aware that there is an FPPC, uh, regulation that, um, has to do with a conflict of interest?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
We do.
And so the five hundred feet, so.
Yeah, no, no, I totally understand that too.
Okay, all right.
And I'm coming, you know, I'm coming in as a volunteer basis. I, you know, I don't expect to, uh, you know, be paid or anything like that. I'm doing it for my city.
Well, that's good because there's no money in it.
That's what I think. And I'm not, I'm not doing it for money. I know I'm doing it, like I said, I grew, I, I moved it, uh, I'm sixty-three. I moved here when I was five years old.
Nice.
So I, I've seen a lot of changes in Derry Oaks.
Yeah, and there's, there may possibly be a few more coming up.
Exactly.
So, well, Sal, thank you again for applying. What I'd like, uh, John, do we go out to the public? No. Mr. Gerton?
Um, uh, no, I don't think so. Alex? Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think so. So, um, let's do, I'm sorry?
I, I'm sorry, I was just, uh, I was going to agree with, with the city manager. Uh, this is appointment and you review the applications and, and go from there.
So we do a, um, roll call vote with a name of one or the other? Is that correct?
I move that we know we appoint, uh, Louise Getzel as our new planning commission member.
I'll second.
Okay, Karen, can you do a roll call vote?
Certainly. Councilmember Shirley?
I'd like to vote for Louise, yes.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Aye.
Councilmember Donaldson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lintel?
Aye.
Mayor Kerr?
Aye. So Louise, if you could hang on, we're gonna do a swearing in. And Sal, I would like to encourage you to keep a watch on planning commission, uh, spots. They do come up every now and then and we're always looking for good folks. And, um, and I'm glad we had two applications. Unfortunately, we don't have two spots, so.
No problem.
So we're, we're here and we need a lot of, of help and so there will be another spot coming up soon.
No problem. And congratulations to the gal that got it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Okay, Louise, if you could raise your right hand.
Sure.
And I've never done this online, so bear with me. Um, so I state your name.
I, Louise Getzel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome back to the planning commission. All right. Okay, so, uh, we're going to move on to new business, item number two. Review potential ARPA, uh, projects to be funded and provide staff with further direction. Let's turn this over to City Manager Gertens.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Uh, congratulations, Louise, or con- condolences. We'll see how that works out for you. Uh, let's see, can I share my screen here, Randy? I think it's working. Whoops, wrong one. Okay, so, uh, what do we want to cover here tonight is, um, the American Recovery Act. The American Rescue Plan Act, sorry, American Rescue Plan Act, uh, options for projects and get some ideas from the council and some direction on where you'd like us to be looking, uh, as we start looking for projects where we can, uh, spend this money. Uh, for folks who are on the meeting right now who might not be aware of what this is in March, uh, of this year, President Biden signed the act. Oh, it's not showing again?
No, it is, it is.
Oh, can you see it?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
No, no, this is the wrong presentation. At least what I'm seeing.
Oh, it's a TMC presentation, sorry.
Oh, yeah, and so it didn't switch over to the other one, yeah. Now that was the there we go. Okay, let's try this again.
There we go.
Now it's working, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, froze on the other one. Um, so, yeah, so the, the American Rescue Plan Act, which we all refer to as ARPA, uh, provided one point nine trillion dollars in economic recovery, uh, for helping everybody get out of the pandemic. Uh, sixty-five billion dollars of that was set aside specifically, uh, for cities nationwide. Um, for Delray Oaks, uh, we're going to get just shy of four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we've already received the first installment of that, which was the one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six. Um, that's already in the bank and is ready to be used now. Uh, looks like sometime between May, May and July of next year is when the second, uh, amount of money will come. So then we'll have the full three hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-six thousand, give or take. So, uh, the categories where you can look to spend ARPA money, um, there's five main categories. Most of these would be nice to have if we had millions of dollars coming into us, like a lot of other cities. Uh, we don't, so we'll go over a few of these, but there's only one in particular that I want to focus on. Um, but, you know, some cities have the option of using it for, uh, supporting public health response. Uh, so with clinics, things like that, uh, bolstering their emergency first responders. Um, number two is addressing negative economic impacts. Uh, so helping your small businesses or helping, uh, individuals with rent, uh, rental assistance, things like that. Um, the one that I'd like to focus on is number three, replacing public sector revenue loss. That's, um, there's a formula that the, uh, Treasury Department put out, uh, for calculating how much revenue, uh, cities have lost relative to the pandemic and issues that we had with closures in the pandemic. Um, ju- just initial working with the calculator for that. Um, our, our revenue loss is in, is far in excess of the four hundred thousand that we're going to get in ARPA funding. So, um, by using the third one for revenue, uh, uh, loss, it's basically like getting general fund money coming into the city. So we can use it like we use general fund money for anything that we do here in the city. Um, other cities have the option of paying for essential workers. Uh, we wouldn't get very far with our funding for that. Uh, and then another option, which is a good one, and, and, you know, it's potential for us and kind of falls in line with what I'd like to talk about. But, uh, it's for expanding or improving water access or sewer or broadband infra- infrastructure, um, which isn't an issue for us here on the peninsula necessarily. So the, uh, like I said, for revenue recovery, it's basically, think of it like general fund money. So it's TOT, it's tax money. We can use it for any services that we provide in the city. We can really use it for anything we want. Um, as we're looking at projects and you'll see some of the projects that we've already looked at at the staff level for recommendation. Um, I think that the best way for the, the city to get the biggest bang from the dollars that we're getting, uh, at least for the initial amount of money, the just shy of two hundred thousand, is to be looking at long deferred infrastructure maintenance and improvement projects in the city. Um, we, we have a number, yeah, Ron has an ongoing list of all of the things he would love to do if money was not an object. And so we'd like to start ticking away at those. We want to be strategic about it and get some of the ones that are going to give the biggest bang for the buck for us and help us continue to provide the services that we provide going on into the future. And, you know, until we have future revenue streams, as we heard about earlier tonight. Um, and then also, uh, modernization of our operations. And I'd like to, you know, propose some recommendations specifically for technology, uh, but some other, some other things which we've already started to tick off, like, uh, personnel manual, things like that, um, that kind of foundational structural support uh, for operations and service delivery that we're kind of lacking in the city, uh, which is typical of a city our size, but we have an opportunity now with this influx of money to address some of those things. So, uh, those are the two areas that I would recommend, at least for this first tranche of funding, that that's where we focus our attention and addressing some of the low hanging fruit in some of these areas. And so the project ideas that we've been kicking around, uh, at City Hall here at the staff level, um, are things like, uh, you know, mobile data terminals and our police cruisers. Um, it was a little surprising to me when I got here and saw that we don't have computers in our police cars. Uh, because I, that's something that dates back to the eighties in a lot of other jurisdictions and um, from an operational efficiency standpoint, with our limited staffing and our limited resources, um, anytime an officer has an interaction with somebody, uh, that requires filling out a report or taking down information, and especially with some of our new requirements in terms of, uh, and Jeff can jump in and explain this later, but the RIPA requirements and, you know, cap- capturing more data so that we can report on our interactions with the community. Right now, uh, the officers have to come in and sit at a computer and sit at a desk and type that in after they've had that interaction. And so that takes them from off the streets for the time that is to do, that they need to do that. So getting the, the units in the cars, we want to be strategic about it and not put one in every car, but get enough that we have some so that they can move from car to car, uh, as we have people out. And, uh, there, we don't need to outfit every car with them. So, so that's one of the things we're looking at. Slope stabilization. Um, that refers to the hillside right behind my office here. And so this is a personal one for me because I'd rather not slide down into the park. Uh, but if anybody's been out recently, uh, to see the parking lot here at City Hall, you can two, about two years ago, Ron did some resurfacing out there to, uh, flatten out the parking lot and fill some cracks. And we're already seeing several inches of separation in those cracks, which means that the hillside is sliding down. So City Hall is gradually sinking down into the park and so we want to do some work out there to stabilize that hillside, uh, so that we don't end up down in the park. As much as I love the park, I want my office to stay up here. So those are some of the infrastructure things. Uh, there's also options for improving the driveway so that people can get in and out, especially as we come out of, out of COVID and we start to actually have City Hall as a city center again. Um, we'd like to do some improvements so it's safer for people coming in and out. Um, and also resurfacing the parking lot, just because that's something that needs to be done. Uh, for the modernization stuff, you know, agenda management software, I think, is really low hanging fruit. We'd like to move, uh, towards, uh, I don't like to say paperless because we're never really going to get to paperless in the near future, but to less paper. Uh, these, these binders that we print for the meetings are, are, it's a lot of paper and it's a lot of time and a lot of money. Um, so the agenda management software will help us provide better services to you all, to the council, but also to the community, uh, because it'll help with transparency. We'll get the agendas out quicker. Uh, after the meeting, the videos that we have here won't be on YouTube anymore, which means that they'll be housed, uh, on the, in the cloud for us. So we still have ownership of those. When we put them on YouTube, YouTube can use those, uh, if they, if they want, uh, and, and as they see fit. Um, but more importantly, we'll have the agenda with the agenda packet. And so if somebody missed the meeting and there's just one topic on the agenda that they wanted to hear the discussion about, they can click on that topic and it'll take them to that section in the video without them having to scroll. And so that's a huge improvement in our service delivery in that regard. Record, uh, management, uh, same thing. It, it's just digitizing a lot of what we have here in files and keeping it in a digital format, uh, that's searchable, so we'll be able to respond to public records requests more efficiently. Uh, we'll have a better record of everything that we do here at City Hall. We'll have, uh, notices that come up relative to our record retention policy. So let us know when, when it's time to, uh, start looking at purging records and what records need to be kept. Um, so that's another opportunity. And then finally, for the council chambers, again, hopefully someday, we're going to have in-person meetings again. Uh, there's, uh, technology upgrades that need to be done just pre-pandemic in the council chambers so that, again, people who can't come in and want to watch the videos from home can actually hear what the discussion is and can see who, who's presenting and, and, uh, and, and see people's reactions as if they're at the meeting. Um, but also as we start to move into a post-pandemic world, um, what does that look like? Are we doing hybrid meetings? Where some people are here, some people are joining on Zoom and what technology do we need to be able to accommodate that? Um, and then also there's infrastructural issues, uh, that, that we'll need to look at, uh, if we're having people come in and sit together, whether they're masked or not, uh, sitting together in a relatively small space. And so do we have adequate, uh, HVAC systems? And are we moving air effectively so that the pair is not being stagnant in there? So, so those are the kinds of things that we're looking at. I'm not necessarily looking for you all right now to say yes or no to these projects, just so you get an idea of what we're looking at and give us some input on where you'd like to see us start looking, uh, to spend some of this money. And then we'll come back in January or February with an actual recommendation on projects. And I'd like to get some of the low hanging fruit done this fiscal year. Um, just one last thing for next fiscal year, uh, when everything you see here can probably be done with the first amount of money that we got. Be done with the first amount of money that we got, might be squeezing it kind of tight there, but. I I think this might be able to be done with the first amount of money if we wanted to go that direction later. I want to be a little bit strategic with at least a portion of the money that we get next fiscal year and. We have until twenty twenty six to expend these funds. And so I I would like to. Set aside a portion of that money or for you all to be thinking about setting aside a portion of that money. Because we we have an infrastructure bill that's coming forward. We don't know what that's going to look like or how they're going to roll out that funding. But there's going to be a lot of grant grant opportunities. I I expect for roads and infrastructure and parks and water and stormwater, all that kind of stuff. And I want to have money set aside so that as those grant opportunities come up, we have matching funds and we have a bill ability to go out and get those grants and maximize. This money that we got. So so anyway, with that long winded way of saying this is what we're thinking about for ARPA and now I'd love to hear from you all and what you'd like to see.
Great, thank you. Yeah, let's go back to.
So. Mayor, if I can.
Um, yes.
John has been a. A great partner in moving things forward from Dino to me to him. And I I would like to say that. The transition to all the projects we've made, whether it's the. The sidewalk project from.
Portola to work.
Yes, and in 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 other areas. He's he has been a a great partner and 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 a great boss and I I would like to say that. It it's been a smooth transition from going from a. A a city manager who has, you know, Tino who has been. Just, just a. A a good mentor to a good. Well, a good mentor to let me to go into John Gerton to be. The the person who we need to lead this city forward. He's he's been amazing and and I can't, I can't. I can't say anything better for him. He's he's been. He's been great. He's been a good transition and and I hope that. I hope he'll be with us. Long term to to make things better for our city.
Jeff, did you, was there anything in particular about the ARPA funds that you wanted to mention or?
Yeah, no, absolutely, Mayor. I I think the ARPA funds need to be used for. For solid. Not, not necessarily. Not necessarily like. You know. Not big. Giant plans, but for. Short term. Things that will make our city better. The the ARPA funds we. Yeah, the ARPA funds we have, the ARPA funds that we will get will be. Perfect for a transition to make us into a a a very. I'm I'm sitting here in the rain in in Kishawa, so I'm I'm a little. I I'm I'm sorry for my.
That's okay. Jeff, Jeff, we need to, we need to move to the council for this.
No, the 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 ARPA funds need to be. Used for short term. Things that will make the city better.
I agree. All right. So thank you. What I'd like to do is go to Vice Mayor Lindell. Any questions about the ARPA funds and? How city manager is suggesting using them?
I have no questions, but I do like the way he has presented it. I think that especially the. Upgrades to the police cars. I think that's extremely important. And I like the prior other priorities as he's mentioned also. I think he's done a good job. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Gagliotti.
Oh, yeah, I like that list and and city manager, we can. You think that we could fit that tranche into the first tranche, right? I mean, that that's about about a two hundred thousand dollar list.
That's what we were looking at. It might not work with all of the, all the great ideas that Ron has for around City Hall here. But we're looking to trying to get it close.
I definitely want that agenda management software seaside. When I was in four, I was sitting next to seaside and they had everything on it. All the council members got iPads. And and everything was on it, every single and it was it always refreshed everything and and I had Dino look at it and at the time it was. I mean, it's not cheap, but if we've got money, I definitely would like us to to have that. That was good. The second thing is that in the second tranche, I think, I understand that you want to. Use that for matching monies, but can we use any of that to pay off any of our debt? Because we've got, we've got the federal loan that's sitting out there and anytime that we get free money. I would love to see if we could just start chipping away at that. It's it's just a ticking time bomb that's just sitting out there. So I'd like to know if we could use it. You know, if we can't, can't, but. If we can funnel off fifty K, a hundred K, whatever to that, that'd be great.
Yeah, so Roberto and I will be doing our due diligence over the next few weeks. We'll be coming to the Budget Committee next month to talk a little more detail about what the funding struck or what the. Treasury Department Calculator tells us about revenue recovery so that we make sure that we actually fit in that category. And I I think we're fine. I just want to. Cross all the eyes, across all the Ts, dot all the Is.
Yeah, I get it.
But but yeah, once we do that and we're good on that, it's general fund money and we can use it for everything.
So that would be nice. I and I also think that you're absolutely right and maybe even the City Hall kind of. Hill stabilization money. I think that the the B U V is going to be. You know, a watershed for everything. I mean, my industry is going to be living off of it for years. And I think that they'll. That, I mean. That would be interesting to see. Well, I I I have I have high hopes for that for that bill and and the grant opportunities and being able to use that for. Southbound roads and and hill stabilization and, you know, water infrastructure and all kinds of stuff. So so I definitely think if if we can. Hold back this monies. Knowing that there's probably going to, well, we we're pretty certain that there's going to be, like you said, infrastructure monies in the future. If if we can just be cognizant of that and and trading on that. That's what I'd like. Tip. Great list.
John, if. Through the mayor, if I may. The the unfunded liability through the police department is is. Mostly through PAPRA within, which is not. The classic pers liability. So we have much. We we have a much lower. PAPRA liability through. Through the. The the purse liability that we're looking at.
I, yeah, I got it. There was, it was, it was for something, it's for the, there's a loan that's sitting out there that's just ticking away and we can't. There's one that that there's one that's got interest on it that we can't even touch until we've actually got the. It it's two loans and I I forget the whole combination of it, but. That's that's more what I was thinking about. So.
Okay, let's move on to Mr. Donaldson.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I also really like the list that the city manager has put forward. And I think really, I mean, if if the first tranche can. Cover that, I think that's a great use of those initial funds. And then realizing that. The focus is on infrastructure and maintenance improvements. What I would like to see is priority given to whatever Ron has on his list because I'm sure those things will deal with safety. Long term health of really the environment around our city. Fire considerations, things like that. And I know he's been very proactive in trying to go get grants. And a lot of those grants didn't come through for whatever reason. And maybe we can take a look at using that money to fund some of those things that he has as a priority. That grant money wasn't available for. So that's in in terms of the second tranche, I think those are. A good focus to 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 allocate or prioritize that that second tranche to.
Okay, Ms. Shirley.
Yeah, um, thank you, John. I think you've come up with a really good list. I I am in support of, you know, trying to kind of. Clean house, get these low hanging fruits taken care of. And I like hearing you talk about, you know, future money and grants and I know you're working towards that. And so thank you for for not only using this money, I think. Wisely, I think this is a good, good use of that money, but then also looking forward to how we can, you know, use the money coming in the future and how well we can. You know, use it with all the all the things that we have going on. So, thanks.
And so I agree. I think these are frankly, long overdue. I do have a question. Would the mobile data terminals be split? Would the cost be split with the airport? John, you're.
Yeah, I was, I was trying to unmute you on my, or unmute myself on my phone and that wasn't working. Figure out Zoom one of these days. Yes, that would be something that we would.
Um, I agree with everybody else. I think Ron's list just keeps, needs to keep growing and we pluck. As appropriately because I think he has the most hands on experience. With, you know, hills and dales and everything going on in the city. The only other thing that I would suggest would be to add some more resilience for city buildings. We bought solar panels and I have not seen our P G and E bills go down much. And so I'm wondering if there's a disconnect or if rates went up to, you know, overcompensate for the solar that we did get. The other thing, and you mentioned it, is HVAC. I think the the system in City Hall is probably as old as City Hall. And for the health and the energy efficiency. That would be, in my mind, a really good thing to consider and that could also help address the air circulation. That we may need for having meetings in person. John, did you have something?
I was just going to say the, yeah, I, you know, I think the HVAC system does wonders considering that. City Hall initially was a garage.
Fire station.
For fire trucks, yeah, yeah, but but the actual city chambers or City Hall chambers were, that was the garage, that was the bay. So so I think the system has worked wonders for us, but I I agree. I think we need to look at upgrading some of those systems. So, yeah, thanks.
Yeah, no. And then the only other thing is I would love to be able to. Get whether it's a climate fellow or someone to be able to be dedicated to a climate action plan and reach codes. And all of that kind of stuff, again, to add more resilience to the city at whole. But otherwise. Do you, we'll go out to the public, but do you need? Further recommendations from us or? I mean, you're not needing a vote.
No, no, I think that gives us plenty to put together a plan. And some recommended projects and actually put some meat on the bone and come back with cost estimates. So that I can see if I can live up to what I told Councilmember Gagliotti a few minutes ago. And see what we can get for the money.
And all that do this for a hundred and ninety.
Yeah, so probably January, I'm I'm going to shoot for January. But by February, I'd like to be be back at least with a partial list so we can start getting some of the low hanging fruit done. And be prepared for the next tranche of money to come in.
Okay, so let's go out to the public. I see Louise's hand up.
Yeah, one of the things that might be a consideration. If there's, you know, leftovers or in the next, next round of money is. Getting a grant writer. And leveraging this money to make more money for the city. To bring in more money for the city by by having a grant writer on on retainer of some kind. Thank you.
Thanks, Louise. Any other public comment? I'm not seeing any hands, so I'm going to come back to the council and. Sounds like everybody got some good suggestions in. Ms. Lindell, any last minute items? You're muted. Pat? I I'm going to move on and then I'll come back to you, Pat. John Gagliotti.
No, thanks, John, for putting this together. It was a great list. Thank you.
Pat, did you have something?
Yes, I really liked the list and I hope we can accomplish all that. And thank you, John, for putting that together.
Mr. Donaldson. Mr. Donaldson, you're muted.
Yeah, I have nothing.
Okay, Ms. Shirley.
Yeah, no, thanks, John, for putting it together. Appreciate it.
And I too. Thank you. PowerPoint, it was helpful to walk everybody through it. On that, let's move on to staff reports. Again, thanks, John, for the city manager report in writing. Would you like to say anything verbal?
Uh, yeah, I just want to remind everybody that next, the next two weeks, City Hall will be closed, so the week before Christmas and the week after. A lot of the services that we provide, Public Works, PD, all that will still be going on, but the offices here will be closed. And then other than that, just happy holidays and look forward to seeing you all in the new year.
So Ron is still on the job.
Ron is still on the job. I'm still on the job and PD is still on the job.
Okay, okay. And I want everyone to notice that the council reports are in the agenda packet. As well as some highlights and a letter. So. It says we're adjourned, but I think that's in the wrong spot. We're going to be going to a closed session. So I'd like to see if there's any public comment on the closed session items. Anyone wishing to address the city council on these items can do so now. With a time limit of not more than three minutes. No action will be taken. Ms. Minami.
Well, hello.
Hi.
I would like to say a few words about our new city manager. John Gerton.
Okay.
He's part of the closed session and he's just been an easy fit. To our little quirky. Team. He's a wonderful leader. And he's very easy to talk with. He's a calming influence in what can be a chaotic situation sometimes at City Hall, and I'm appreciating that more and more. Jeff pointed out that he's worked really well with Jeff during the transition. And, you know, he just works well with everybody. I just, I'm really enjoying him. So thank you, John.
Karen, thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to come back. We will go to our closed session. And then we will come out and report out if you choose.
Sorry, Mayor. I'm sorry, I was trying to unmute and try to raise my hand.
Okay, Ron, would you like to say something?
I would. I just want to speak on behalf of. City Manager Gerton, you know, I've been lucky enough and blessed enough to work for. You know, Dino Pick. And Chi Coin and. What I, what I've taken from all of them is they're men of integrity and character. And that's what he possesses in the short time that I've been with him. He's hit the floor running. And I appreciate, you know, his commod. and I appreciate, you know, his camaraderie and his willingness to listen and, and work for the betterment of the residents. So, you guys, I have to heard him.
Thanks, Ron. I appreciate those, those words. Um, so before we go, um, I too would just like to say, if you choose to rotate off, I hope you have a warm, safe and wonderful holiday season. We will see you in the new year. Um, if you'd like to stay, you're welcome to, and we will come and report out when we're done. So on that, happy holidays. We're going to rotate off to a, um, a side meeting. Okay, it looks like, uh, we're all here. So, um, uh, Attorney, uh, Lorca, could you please, uh, report out?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, with respect to, uh, the pending litigation, an updated was provided to council and direction was provided to myself. With respect to the city manager employment review, said review was had, but other than that, no reportable action.
Thank you, sir. Um, our next meeting date is Tuesday, January twenty-five, twenty twenty-two at six o'clock. On that, we're adjourned. Happy, safe, warm holidays and, uh, we'll see you in the park or something. All right, guys.
Good night, everyone.
Take good care.